Okay, let's say everything. All right, we'd like to call this public hearing to order. Breland's groundwater conservation district and declare that there is a quorum present and ask for a roll call.
Director Basada. Director Kirk.
Here.
Director Osborne. Director Tischler. Director Smith. Director McPherson. Director Curtis. Director McClure.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Okay, thank you. Now, we will receive public hearing report from our general manager and receive any public comment. Our request to contest and consider granting, denying, and amending or amending application for the following application. For exemption to minimum spacing required.
Okay, can everyone hear me? This is an application for exception to well spacing from property lines, which is wave wash. Number 11 LP. Applicant received approval to drill an exception well on March 8, 2021. At the time of approval, staff verified the well net minimal spacing requirements. It was following on June 24, staff did a. Site visit and discovered that the drilling actually occurred in a location not originally. Plated and now is approximately 30 foot from the property line. The well location does meet the therefore is not in compliance with the district's. Spacing requirements. Water produced from this well is intended for use to be put into a storage tank and used for renting and then recycled. We did have field cell out there to perform a field. Flow test and the well is testing at 13 gallons per minute. We have reviewed the drilling completion report and it does indicate that the annual. Still is more than adequate for T L rules if we should approve this. Section. I did have Marty overlook this as well to. Reassure me that the sting meeting is adequate, it's over 200 foot below the woodbine. Notice was provided to adjoining landowners of this well being too close to. Based on no comment or response back from anyone. Joining that property plus what we review in that. It would be my recommendation to approve this. It's not the landowners fault that the well got too close. We have taken action on the driller, so this is, you know, just a bad situation that inadvertently was. From what we can tell, there was no intent to put it too close, there was kind of a probably a misunderstanding where the actual property line was. And so therefore wave wash is requested exception to this application and it would be my recommendation to.
Can you tell us what actions taken on the drill?
Well, they're listed further down in the agenda as a major violation. Issue a fine. What the district wants to allow. And the driller has paid for the application on his. Section for the landowner because the driller is taking. That is correct. And if you recall, we approved a minimum spacing last board meeting, one of the stipulations on approving that is that it had to be seen. Specific requirements, that's one reason I took the log to Marty and had him look over it. He said it did appear that that well was already completed adequate. All those second plans. Had it not already been drilled and somebody asked for that exception to these same guidelines, we would see as that it would have so. Fortunately, that well is completed. Adequately to me.
Are there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passed or?
And going forward, Barney, if we could, when you make a motion, you might state your name.
Okay.
First, the next one?
Yes. The term that here from the general manager. Request. To contest or consider granting, denying, or amending applications to follow the permit.
This application is requested from Corky Underwood. Applicant is requesting an operating permit of 1.2 gallons, 1.2 million gallons per year for 2021 only. And an increase of 2.541 million gallons annually thereafter through 2026. This is to produce water from an existing non-exempt well for use for dust control, for road work. The well originally was drilled in February 2015 and. Cross from the Houston October formation, but it has not been in operation since 2018. It was, it would have been eligible for historic use permit application, but no documentation was received, so therefore their request is for an operating permit. One of the reasons probably that there was not a historic use permit put in place, it went through a change in ownership. Mr. Underwood is the new owner and based on my review of the application and staff as well, as well, it would be my recommendation to approve. And I do believe we may have someone here today on that. If you would like to speak. Is this you? Is this your permission?
Y'all didn't know. Dark shop, hard road 21. Jay Mills contracted last week. Got that contract. They did a search. And it's all well and water. That's control.
How long you you vision that the use of this well will be for dust control as that project moves on?
The contract that I have with hills. Really good.
And you will have this well metered and report.
Grifts and plants, as you said. Grift plants.
So. Beginning 2022, he's asking for his maximum. Allowable production, which is the 2.541. He did not request that for 2021 because, you know, here we are in July, there's no way that we. Been through 20, it's five year permit, so it's 2022 through 2023.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a part of. Most. Director Tischler. Second by Director Smith, all in favor, say aye. Oppose. Okay, if there's no, if there's no other items or no other discussion, there's kind of motion to adjourn the sub hearing. Smith. All in favor? All opposed, motion passed, we adjourn this meeting, this hearing. We're in that groundwater conservation district. Do we need any kind of break? All right, we would like to bring to order the regular meeting. Of the Breland's groundwater conservation district. Call it the order and declare a quorum. Public meeting open, which you called.
Director Basada.
Here.
Director Kirk.
Here.
Director Osborne. Director Tischler. Director Smith. Director McPherson. Director Curtis. Director McClure.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Okay, are there any public comments? Speakers are allowed three minutes per speaker. If not, we'll go on to the first agenda item, the consent agenda, all items are considered routine and self-explanatory and may be considered and approved by one motion of the board. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests. In which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence, or would anyone like to throw an item in the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to pass the. Director Ken Smith just made the motion. They're seconded and the computer is 30, I guess. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, we'll move on to item number five, presentation of un-audited financials for the month of June 2021. Brian Watts, Tom Crowell.
In your board package, you should have had a copy of the profit and loss budget performance report for the month of June. As well as the balance sheet dated June 30. And as you can see. By the, by the report for June 2021. We had total income of 308,8739. And with expenditures. 134,72448, so June was very. Robust month for the district and pretty consistent with prior year as well, so that's, that's a good thing with the collection of the. You can see that our total cash, including petty cash on file. Is 1,641,8399.
Do we have any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to pass by. Tischler has made motion to accept and Director Smith has seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passed.
The next item to look at is we have prepared a monthly cash flow and cash projection for the rest of this year, that should have been in your packet as well. Just a couple of caveats to say that. The shaded area is for the period subsequent to June 30th, so. You know, we're making some, some projections, some prognostications, it's, it's not Carmack, the. Fortune teller on Donnie Carson, but we're one step above that. You know, as we, as we move forward through the year and that shaded fortune becomes more and more narrow. Obviously, those projections will become more and more accurate, but we're using some real, we've, we've got some variables going here. Number one issue, as the board is aware, the way that we build out our folks here. We went from last year's a pay as you go to the historic use permit, so. You know, we don't really have a whole lot of trend analysis that I can pull in from prior year. So we're, we're kind of working without a net there and also we, you know, we have the variable of time. So, but as that time element comes closer and closer towards the end of the year, the accuracy of that projection will become. So as you can see, at the end of June, on our, on our financials, our actual cash, 16416399. And based upon historical precedence and, and making some adjustments there, we're expecting a cash income or a cash inflow of 157,78789. With a projected outflow of 110,19617 for a, a net cash contributed of 47,59172 for the month of July. Now, I will tell you that through the 15th of July, we had already exceeded that cash. So, you know, that's, that's always a good sign. Much rather come to you and tell you that cash was more robust than it was, so, than what we projected, so. But as it stands right now, you know, I'm making a, a projection that will have, will end the year at 1.868 million dollars for cash. Now, the reason that that's important is this board will remember that because of the way that we bill folks, there is an opportunity for them to make a request for a refund. So we need to make sure we have an opportunity and what kind of cash we have on, on hand for that. Once again, we're making projections. We don't know what that refund will entail, we really don't know what that refund amount would be, how can you qualify? In the settlement agreements and this for Sledge puts together, most of them specifically state that they are waiving their right to a refund, so. Obviously, any of those settlement agreements, that's always, you know, those folks have moved off that list. So you look at the bottom, you can see I just simply took a broad brush and said, okay, based upon our 2021. What would we anticipate and we used a 15% number, just based upon everybody in the population that we. That we collected and then we took 15% of that, that, that they would be entitled to a 15% refund. You know, that number turns out to be $271,000. Do we know it's going to be 15%? No idea. Once again, that's going to be based upon several criteria, it's going to be based upon their actual compit, it's going to be based upon, there's some other factors into that rule, how they pay, you know, budget efforts, enforcement actions. Some people may totally depending on, you know, regardless of their compit, because of the way that they, they dealt with paying the district and dealt with enforcement actions, may not be entitled to. So again, it is a, it is a guess, it is a, it is an educated guess, but it's, it's very, it's very optimistic. So we're just trying to come up with, okay, if we, if we have this everybody and we get a 15%, that's, that's the number we're going to be looking at, we'll have that 1.8 taken in the bank and we're going to be looking at about 200, something 1,000. Used cash, whether it's credits to the customers or actual checks. And this is a report that we will update on a monthly basis, so the next time you see this report, you'll already have July in the books and you'll see one less column of shaded numbers.
Has there been any discussion on putting that number in the. Balance sheet as a liability, so we don't potentially ever have a liability going forward?
Well, obviously, we'll put that at the end of the year. Something we. You know, the, the rules for booking the liability, you know, have to be measurable, you know, we have numbers for it and, and it's a, it's a greater than. So.
Yes.
As we, as we move to that point, I, I would absolutely, and I would ensure you that the authors.
Speaking along that line, so when we budget for 2022, we would anticipate that.
It, it will actually book on our 2021 financials.
It'll just carry over.
It'll just carry, and it'll be, you know, it'll be funded in 2022. It'll be reflected as a 2022.
So. That, the refunds are actually requested. Hey, whether it's checks or.
That is my anticipation. We'll, we'll book the liability once it's known. Because of the 2021, that'll be a 1231 booking, once we go with that number is. Of course, it will be, you know, it will be recognized, like you said, whether we do the cash. Or we credit their account, it'll be recognized during the first quarter. And again, this is just, just for informational purposes, no, no action is necessary, we'll keep you updated as this moves along. And then, you know, we'll continue to do this maybe on a six month basis, continue to look at that and we'll see how that impacts us in the first half of 2022. And then the next item on your agenda is for the, the investment report for the second quarter, that should have been in your board package as well. You can see that the, the interest rate market is still. Less than robust. Our money market account draws a 0.25% interest rate and the Wells Fargo checking account pulls a 0.01%. Investment rate there, all of our funds are kept in dollar denominated. At Wells Fargo and Citizen, so we have no.
Are there any other discussion? Entertaining motion to. Okay, item number six. Bucket finance development committee, Director Osborne.
First item is consider and act on resolution 21003, adopting water use fee rate schedule for 2022. The budget and finance committee met last week and following a view and discussion of cash projections for 2022. Recommends the board maintain a production fee of 20 cents for each 1,000 gallons of groundwater used annually for non-ecocultural. Purposes to adequately address anticipated budgeting revenue consideration.
Discussion on the. Director Osborne is second. We have seconded by Director Smith, all in favor, say aye. Discuss and consider, take action as necessary to approve resolution number 21004. Reviewing and approving the investment policy and investment strategies as required.
As. Mr. Kirk just mentioned, the budget and finance committee is charged with reviewing annually the investment policy and investment strategies. Of the district and drafting amendments for consideration by the board. During last week's budget committee meeting, the committee reviewed the investment policy and its investment strategies previously adopted. And has determined that amendments to the investment policy and its strategies are not needed at this time. Essentially, there was no changes that came out of the legislature that would have affected the investment act and. Like we did a really clean, clean sweep last year when we did a review, so it would be my recommendation to reapprove this policy.
Are there any discussion? Made by Director Osborne. Director Smith, second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, item number C, consider and act on resolution number 21005. Establishing administrative fee schedule and authorize the general manager to take any and all action necessary for the implementation of this resolution.
And the budget and finance committee reviewed previously adopted administrative schedule. It recommends amendments as provided in your packet today. Will notice on page 103. What I have included as additions or items that we overlooked when we were doing a sweep last year. Initially created a administrative fee schedule, there were a few things in the rules still. Because they need to go back to the rule to look at or any amendment to that. Cause a rule amendment, so one more time, sweep that over into this administrative fee schedule so that any changes can happen by resolution. At a posted board versus a. We did add one, a new item under application fees, which is a fee associated with well restorations. You'll recall the rules allow so many extensions of a well restoration once you have received approval. The want, the third extension requires board approval, so we have put in a fee for that, once it hits that third extension needing to go before the board. On the, on page 104, the. Red line on there is just clarifying changes that. Clean up that language, once we started reviewing. You know, authorization to increase permitted. To increase permitted authorization at our. to increase permitted authorization and our operating permit versus not requiring notice of hearing. There's really no such thing, all operating permits regardless of your name or what did require a notice of hearing. So that was stricken out and just rolled up into the line out of the above. So unless there's questions regarding any of these amendments or proposed amendments to the fee schedule, it would be my recommendation. Also, I'd like to point out that we could affect the date of September 1.
Discussion, questions, comments? Made by Director Osborne. Second by Director Fisher, all in favor? All opposed? Most passes five zero. Okay, item number D, Discuss and Consider and Take Action as Necessary to Approve and Authorize Participation in the Text Pool Investment Pools and Designating Authorized Representatives.
Text Pool is one of the oldest and largest local government investment pools in the state of Texas. It was actually created back in 1989 to offer public entities an opportunity to find their investment dollars in pool that seek safety, principal, quickly, and build outdoor investments consistent with work required in the Texas Public Investment Act. In that conservative, conservative in US government securities, repurchase agreements and AAA rated money market provide safe, effective, efficient Under our investment policy, being able to invest in these type of pools right now, interest rates being offered through text pool, text pool prime is greater than certificate deposits. Did you, Brian, did you happen to look that up? I asked him this morning if he could give us what today's rate is.
Their prime is point zero seven, so it's less than the citizens.
It would be my recommendation to at least approve this resolution so we can look at it at that time we start investing this money. Is that a viable option? It has been over one percent. As Brian mentioned, it's just been a correction, but if we had money, I would have been after y'all to get it in there sooner.
Are any discussion on this? We have seconds, all in favor? All opposed? Passes five zero. Okay, we'll move on to item number eleven. Presentation and Update on Groundwater Management System Database Development, Eric Atkinson, APAP and Associates, Searchers Incorporated.
And y'all should have a copy at your seat of the actual PowerPoint.
Thank you very much for having us here today. So we've deployed out everything up through task number three. Hooked up data is high level screenshots of what we have at the website. When you log into the database, everything is secured. You do have to have a user account to log in. First thing you see is just the dashboard kind of showing overall how much production has been going on. For screen, so you can look at that information. Down the left side of the screen, you can see that wells, permits, owners, drillers. Accounts, who represent the so then click on one of those, it will take you to specific screens that help certify wells. Just the ID number. Taxes. Certain sorts of others called same thing. And that same type of search screen applies to for the well details, lots of information stored on the wells. Basic information like the ID. Any information related to construction, what was registered, original location. It's a PDF, so I think what's the well is, you know, being used. It also stores the president of the board with state ID numbers. Plenty of room to add those. Quick example of what the water levels look like, get the information in there. Reflecting this information, distracting what is stat. Similar for permanent information, again, tracking the fact of permit, whether it's ten uses, which is permitted for also show your addresses. Bring in new wells, we do have the online well registration, so outside users can create an account. The permits are established, the wells associated with it, this screen shows what an irrigated system looks like, so one permit, whether for use or operating, we see all the wells associated with that. Once the accounts are set up, the next thing is production reporting, so users can log in, submit their monthly well by well, or we've also created a batch interface. For the online payment processing, users can log in, they can see how much once they've done that, see all the payment histories, so they can go back and look across how the accounts back, so also keep track of so item 423, we're going to change that way. Have this stored reports. About the database, of course, we have web maps. Patient as well. This is what, what it looks like. It is built on the marketing platform, so we can support any kind of GFC, but you need change that case. That's why you do ready distances, so you can check the bring up the, the water levels. Example, the, the level work, basically we're bringing in all your layer cake looks like. This is real helpful for somebody interested in doing a new well, they can get a rough idea based on
What are the questions staff has asked me during this process? On our existing system, we have this is this intended to replace that?
This was the tool that was kind of part of our basic groundwater management system.
Because I think staff feels like there is a need for that scrutiny. Might may want to speak to you more on that, but you know.
Yes, the one piece that we're not able to find in Yes. Some other districts that actually have Continuing on the map, lots of ways to do spatial searches, so you know. What parcels are adjacent to existing well or proposed well. The other thing that APP does, we track daily rainfall for a lot of purposes. Every night, we're downloading the previous rainfall. It's spatially distributed, so a little bit different than the rainfall gauge. It's accurate, but it's also generalizing. So it's another data form. Currently, recording, lots of ways to do it. See here a number of pre-generated reports, so just generates a format to say other level data. Finally, on the right hand side, free tool, this gives you access to the entire database. Whatever questions come up, you can fill that up. Other force, for support, we have integrated support, so the little black circles at the bottom right, it's open email button. So if you have questions. So the next step is task number four. Next steps. From items, one is the pop-up prompt, so as you're going through a well registration, depending on how you're answering these questions. Permanent application. Previously, it was just they registration form to the place the well, that's not previously on the way registration. Somebody is self-importing metering, they can change their values and bring back the two new online applications. Ending a well registration. Make a change on how to do permits that are associated with local wells. They look out by corporation.
And if I could add to that, one of the reasons we requested that is after Brian Watts came on, he was aware This payment system that will Did the click, it allows to actually deal away with a merchant service provider that charges all these fees back to the credit card type. And they collect the fees themselves, that's their cost of doing business, we give the full amount owed to us, so there's not, you know, a variety of different fees depending on what style of credit card somebody uses. Wish I'd known about it sooner. I did have a question, so back on this specifically. Once we kind of work out the bugs on or the details, is there another cost involved with that?
The
What's the next question?
The address, that's for the four, or what's in place?
We had basically said, everything was good. Thank some of these That for is needed to make it fully functional. I'd rather have it all there. We all hate to update, but we can't find. Roll it out. That would be my goal. As far as the cost here, we have Under our budget, if this is approved today, seventeen thousand dollars, and we have additional income we have received through some of our violations, where we found some wells and non-compliance and not reporting or paying pumpage to the district For five, six years, and so we've had a little seventy thousand dollars in additional income, so my My request would be to use funds from that to pay this seventeen thousand. It's taken a little longer than I anticipated, you know, some of it on us, you know, we just kind of got bogged down in other things and then getting back to it. But then also, most of them work in remote. Our public is ready for it, they really are, you know, I think they're tired of hearing us say we're revamping our database, revamping, you know.
Certain value for being slow.
Right. And I think the strategically thing could be after we roll it out, because that's not really something the public sees, that's internal. But hopefully, it won't be one. That is correct, we have a public level, we have a user level for our permities, we have administrative level, which is staff. So one of the things he mentioned is change in mobility for meter readings to be modified, you know, They can be modified, but you have to contact staff, staff has to assist to do that, and it's to prevent, you know, people Wanting, you know, realizing their permits may be going to be overproducing, so hey, that meter number was wrong. It may be wrong, but they need to contact us, so we have a part in it. Public should be able to see where these wells are located, they won't be able to get into any financial information, they won't necessarily be able to see A meter readings, it's more just location and probably some of the well completion, because you should be able to click on a well, save the locations, Whether it's in the Haasun or so forth, correct?
Right, yeah, and you also get to big team work that the public sees and look under all the well.
And the whole goal is, you know, it's public information to allow our public have access in their planning. You've got consultants wanting to help develop permits for their clients, and if they are able to look and see where these wells are surrounding or Completed, especially with our well spacing tool, it helps them, you know, proceed more effectively working for clients before they even reach out to us. And those are the measured levels we take, so not everyone's going to have that on there, we're not going to be Doing water level decline maps that are part of this at this time.
Any other discussion on the side? If not, I've entertained a motion to authorize the general manager to execute task order number four, would have Associate to incorporate the database modification. motion made by Director Smith.
Second.
Second by Director Fisher, all in favor? All opposed, none, motion passed, five zero. Thank you.
Also want to point out, David is here as well, he's with half.
Okay, we'll move to item number eight, discussion of possible action authorized general manager to offer Offer a settlement to the following alleged major violations of the district.
We touched on this briefly earlier during our permit hearing. This is Double D Drilling, they're located out of Denton, they are the drilling company that originally drilled that well, or they're not originally, they did drill the well, Requested spacing exception. From what I explained, there was a request for a well restoration on March the eighth, and staff went out to inspect that. And I actually think we got a call, a meeting saying it looks like it's not where we originally thought it would be, and We did determine it was approximately thirty foot from the property line. We have been working with this driller, he was actually here earlier to speak on behalf of the exception, I mean, He's on his hands and knees, but you know, asking for some type of leniency forgiveness, but you know, as I told him, it is a major violation. I will be asking the board to authorize me to offer a settlement agreement For this violation, and this goes in line with what we've done on other major violations, the way the rules are set up right now, I have to have authorization Before I offer this, this is, you know, a step to avoid possible litigation, further attorney involvement, if we can reach a settlement, and we stay consistent on these settlement offers for what we Have offered other drillers or similar life. So if y'all are in agreement, it would be my recommendation to authorize me to reach back out to Data fine, a warning. Chance to do better, and this avoids anything being filed with TVLR as well.
Are there any discussion?
I agree, I think it would be helpful, I just bring the non-compliance of those to the board.
General manager to offer a settlement agreement to Double D Drilling for violence that's drilling well in different locations and authorize Director Fisher makes motion, Director Smith second, all in favor? All opposed, none, motion passed, five zero. Now move on to item number nine, to discuss, consider and take action. To consider application for exceptions to minimum tract size requirement for Benjamin and Jacinda Eason For the purpose of proposed well to be drilled at ninety-nine thirty-three Cowan Road, six oh three seed, Borston, Texas.
Yes, at this time, there's no action for today, this applicant had been in contact with the office regarding this exception. We totally go ahead and get the item on the agenda, but they had to have all completed paperwork to us by the end of last week. They're actually seeking us another hopeful solution that they may, if they get that, they will not be seeking this exception. So they wanted to try that avenue first, so it may or may not be listed on the agenda for next. That is correct, since it was already posted, I had to leave it on.
Very further discussion. If not, we'll move to item ten. Update on public outreach activities, educational and conservation efforts, Sinclair Newbie.
Hey, good morning, just a few updates here, I'm going to kind of keep it brief, because I know we have a lot else to discuss this morning. The water education trailer was at Rio Vista Elementary on June twenty ninth for summer school classes. We had a hundred and four students that came through the trailer that afternoon. And it was a really good event, we'd never been at Rio Vista Elementary before, so I was excited to make that connection and build that relationship there, and I think it'll definitely be one that we will Be back at in the future. I read the press release on June twenty ninth about Smart Irrigation Month, which is an initiative that's put on by the Irrigation Association, and it's just to help promote and bring awareness to making more water-wise Choices and practices when it comes to irrigating and watering our lawns and gardens at home. So just helping promote that and get some of those conservation recommendations out for our public. Kathy and I presented to the Cleburne Lions Club last Wednesday, it was a really good group of participants there at that meeting, and they asked some great questions, and again, I think it was a great way to promote the district and the public and the community, and help answer some questions That the public had. And then the summer twenty twenty-one issue of the Prairie Lands E-line newsletter was released last week as well, and I have just a few upcoming events. Kind of this time of year slows down a little bit, but the Water Education Trailer does have an event next week. And then we've got some things coming up in the fall, but I am starting to get more interest in some events to schedule in the fall from people who are reaching out, and I think we'll, we'll see that calendar start to fill up as we move into the fall. So that's all I have to report this morning, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I'd like to add that the presentation to the Lions Club was really Sinclair presenting, I was just there for moral support and lunch, so. I did answer questions, but Did a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sinclair, is there any discussion on the side? All, we've been moved to item eleven. Item eleven, groundwater maximum area eight, update on activities related to joint planning and the settlement of desire and future conditions.
Okay, well, we thought we were about to get back underway, we had a meeting originally scheduled for tomorrow, July twentieth, that has been canceled, the GMA is still waiting, receipt of the draft explanatory report Being prepared by WSP. The goal is to get that in everyone's hand, to allow adequate time to review before we schedule a meeting Consider re-adopting, there shouldn't really be any changes, because our DFCs have already been approved, but we want to make sure the document, the preparation of that document is What we want, so they have canceled that meeting, though we're sitting out of Doodle Pole, once we get the draft, of course, I haven't heard what the status is on preparing that, Once I have an idea, I'll Kind of sit back and wait, believe we have till September or We're well within timelines, but I'll be tracking that to make sure it's not getting too tight. Thank you, that's all I have to report on.
Any questions or comments on item eleven? If not, we'll go to item twelve, engineering reports, Wade Oliver from Intera.
All right, good morning, everybody, hope, hope you're able to hear me okay, I, regarding the last item, real, really quickly, I believe that the The deadline for final submission there is in January of twenty twenty-two, so there's, there's some time, not trying to take the foot off the pedal on that, but That was the, that was the last agenda item. A quick Sorry, was there a question?
No, I said, thank you for providing that.
Yeah, so quick, I just wanted to give, give you all a quick update on our activities, because we've been, we've been making really diligent progress here, we, we met with The Planning and Development Committee in late June, I believe it was the twenty-eighth To, to give an update there and, and talk about both monitoring plan and some of our initial findings On the data that we're working through, so on the, on the monitoring plan, we are looking to set up another more, more detailed update meeting In August, but we've been evaluating data availability and, and trying to identify approaches to, to efficiently expand the monitoring network, and when I say efficiently, I mean, using, you know, we're, we're very much open to identifying locations for, for new wells and, and aquifers that we want to target with those, but The first step on that is identifying where we have existing wells and what those completions are, so that we can maximize the use of existing holes in the ground, which then Makes the, the district's dollars go a little farther when New monitoring walls are put in, so we are, we are working on that components of the monitoring plan, I anticipate that that will be a very iterative process with With the district staff and the, and the district board, either through committees or through the full board directly. We've also been looking at, at water level trends in the district, I haven't presented that information to, to the district staff yet or the committees, but I anticipate that we'll be doing that the next time that we meet, that, that's involved a process of going through and, and associating wells with, with different units and, and looking at Water level trends over time, and, and that actually feeds nicely back into the monitoring plan, because it, it highlights really clearly The aquifers that we have, or the sections of the aquifers that we have, great enough well density to Understand what's happening in, in an area, and areas where that density is, is really sparse. Beyond that, we have, we've done a review of the district's well spacing tool, and, and the way that it's, the way that it's being used And, and how it interrelates with, with the district's well spacing rule, so we're, we are looking at, at Different approaches for making the evaluation of well spacing relationships a little a little, little easier to evaluate, both internally for the district and, and try to make it as seamless as, as possible for people that are planning out where to, where to drill their wells and such. So those, that's kind of an update of the discussions that we've had at the committee and some of the work that we've been doing on this side. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to add that we're trying to reschedule a follow-up meeting. We were hoping to stack it on the same day as our rules committee. But unfortunately, there was some conflict. So I plan to probably tomorrow send out a poll to get some dates to schedule that meeting. I called Paul on the phone. I'm ready for vacations and normalcy to get back in place so we can get everyone all under the same. Again, if you have questions, please reach out to me or let.
Yeah. Thank you all.
Thanks, Professor Oliver. If there's no other discussions, questions or comments, we'll move on to item number thirteen, which is the general manager's report and next.
As you heard me mention, we do have a rules committee meeting scheduled for August the fifth. Other things of interest, I think everyone may have heard, the governor has repealed or he's pulling back the open meeting exceptions effective September one. We will be required to go back to. Yeah, the in-person. Now, a question that was posed to me, Brana, but you're here to ask. Does that cover even emergency meetings? If we have emergency, can you still go version? Because it said it repealed certain provisions. But has the following an emergency?
Yeah.
They, they just text me with, unless you lean into the mic, they can't hear us.
We can't through our regular. But yeah, still the existing emergency provisions.
We will try to figure out how to get these mic. Apparently people can hear me because I lean in. Maybe they're saying they can hear okay. I think he's speaking louder. But that can always come up here first. But if any of that changes, you know, we're hearing more and more outrage on the news train. So this might materialize. Yeah. Update on board of directors appointment. Letter notices did go out to county judges in June. I sent reminder emails July twelfth. To date, I have received verbal confirmation on the reappointment of Politicianler for Johnson County and Marty McPherson for Somerville County. I do plan to reach out personally, either go to the county courthouses and visit with the judges just to make sure they're getting it on their agenda. I know they're all busy, but you know, we just want to make sure it's on the agenda. We get the paperwork and so forth. Other things, we do have a little bit of enforcement. We're still wrapping up. We're at that last, you know, we got them where they've signed their settlement agreements, just getting them. Amending those permits and payment of the outstanding fee. So we've made a lot of progress. I know staff is, you know, they're probably seeing certain names in their sleeve you know, having to visit with them so many times. Seems to be a little bit of handholding, but going forward, it's going to be a lot easier. Other items of interest, I can't really think of at this time. I think there's a lot going on in Austin that Ryan can speak to. Fortunately, at this point, not, it doesn't affect groundwater districts, but we always keep our eye open. But I guess as long as the Democrats are out of state, we don't have to worry about. But unless someone has questions regarding anything administrative. It's for use permits. No, I just kind of glossed over that, but thank you. We're still working on those reviews. We're really down to the, you know, completion. As I mentioned last time, we need to step out, what is the process on setting these for hearing for approval? Again, it kind of goes back to my comment, get vacations over with, where everyone's calendar is firm, where we can start getting those dates. I need to work with counsel on that. He needs to be home for a while. I won't pick on him too much today. It's his birthday, so. Do you think?
Oliver, any other questions or comments? Or? If not, we will move on to item fourteen, general counsel report.
Thank you, directors. Glad to be with you on this historic day. Summer of love in nineteen sixty-seven. Over there in Spink, Texas. What a great. And for me. Mostly, we've been working over the last month with, with staff on just permitting, compliance and enforcement issues. I have emailed each of you our final legislative report from the regular session. Wait till after the governor's veto deadline expires so we know what the new laws are. And then go back and resummarize those as they were amended or whatnot through the legislative process. But you should all have that as well as the list of things we were tracking for the district. There was a whole lot of open meetings and public information act bills in the session or separate report. And, and one of the things that, as Kathy already noted, that, that didn't pass was some continuation of allowing virtual meetings. Council meetings of government entities. Whole lot of effort to do that because people got used to zooming and Microsoft Teams during the pandemic. And a lot of folks embraced that. But there was a contingent in the Texas Senate that just don't care for those. Bought any bills. Tried to make their way to the Senate Board to authorize that outside of emergency situations. As Kathy noted, we, we are in a special session. Nothing's happening. Rules of special session are that the legislature is limited by law to whatever the governor puts on his call. And he didn't really put anything on there that would impact the district. So our activities for y'all are very minimal, non-existent now, but nothing's happening. But of course, members can file bills, they can file groundwater district tax bills all day long. How the legislature handles that historically, if they do, is varied. Often times they just never get a hearing. They see anything yet this, at special sessions. Lots of groundwater stuff come up, even though the governor's calling. You have to at least get in there enough to object and stop it because they can sneak on through with nobody objecting. But I anticipate the governor's going to keep calling special sessions, open special sessions into the year, if not further. They've got to do one on redistricting. They've got federal funds coming down that they're going to have to do. The Ds aren't going to be able to stay in Washington forever. We will have some activity at this point. For the fall, the summer, fall or up. They've got stuff they've got. But I don't think that's going to happen. If you have any questions on the report I've sent out or on any of the other things we're doing.
All right. Are there any questions, comments for Mr. Sledge? We appreciate you, Ms. Sledge. Okay. Fifteen, open forum, discussion, new business, future meeting. If anyone has any items they would like to discuss? If not, go to item sixteen, call for a motion to adjourn this regular meeting. Director Smith, motion to adjourn. Director Osborne seconds. All in favor? This meeting has terminated. Thank you very much.